Thank you. You do an email.
All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Acheson County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January twenty eighth. Like to call the meeting to order. Commissioner Noel stepped out for just a second. He'll be right back and then we will move on to roll call. Commissioner Noel's out there. He'll be behind you.
First.
Yeah. All right, roll call family clerk. All right. Commissioner Quinn. President. Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Noel.
Present now.
All right, and invocation not this morning. Uh, no one has is coming this morning, so please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. All right, seeing none. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I would like to um, look for a motion to add under the consent agenda, a number four. I have an order number twenty twenty-five dash one. To for us to vote on disposing records um, for the county clerk. So I'd like to add that. And then with that addition, I would look for approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Consent agenda, uh, commission meeting minutes. Um, we all had a copy of the minutes. From Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, I look for a motion to approve um, those if you guys had a chance to read them.
She'll move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Um, next is the finance director, um, who will review with us payroll, credit cards, and expense review.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, there was no payroll this week. Um, credit card total was twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Um, it was a statement that EMS and rescue. They paid that. Um, it was just supplies. So then expenses. The total for in my email is for February twenty-fifth, but it's February fifth for tomorrow. Um, the total sixty-six thousand, one sixty-seven eighty-four. Which forty-one thousand of that is special highway. It's phase one Ottawa Road for culverts. So really only that's about twenty-seven, twenty-two thousand left. Of other items. And with the distribution that happened, we still have uh, six and a half million and the general fund. So that will keep us up low for quite a while.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have order number twenty twenty-five dash one. The Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County do hereby order Susan Carrigan County Clerk to dispose of records listed below in accordance with K A R fifty-three dash two dash one nineteen and or K S A forty-five dash four oh six. And amendments there too. And witness, we have on here unto set our hands this fourth day of February twenty twenty-five. And these are just older records. I'll pass it around. You guys can read them and then I will look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell?
I was fortunate enough to attend the legislative coffee Saturday morning. I just my take is that we have wonderful, we have wonderful representation uh, for Acheson and the Acheson community. Commissioner Rebus, now Representative Rebus uh, is is going to bat for us and Senator Greg Bowser is going to bat for us. And uh, I encourage Acheson community members to get involved and engaged in these because they are, they are in Topeka fighting for the us at the local level. So I encourage folks to get engaged in that. And that's, and and I believe that was sponsored by the Chamber. And so I appreciate the fact that the Chamber is still in that for our community.
Yeah, I was trying to get there. It's awful hard for me to get around and chores and stuff done and get there by eight. So they have that pretty early. But yeah, I do encourage any uh, community member that's uh, looking into concern about taxes and stuff to attend these because they're very informative about what direction different legislation's going and I'm really interested in some of the things that we're talking about property tax caps or and things like that. So uh, and then I have a area agency on aging meeting this Thursday morning. And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I wanted to let everyone know to mark your calendars is our solid waste director has um, chosen the days um, for our third annual Acheson County cleanup. It will be April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Um, this is the third annual and historically all of our local schools, um, cities, everybody's participated. Um, so just looking forward to that. I know Stacy's working on compiling uh, more information and we will uh, put that out as we, as we receive it. But just wanted to get those dates on your calendars. So uh, presentation of petitions or proclamations. We don't have any um, unfinished business. We have the weather policy update. Did you guys have a preference on those? She had sent us two different parts of one, two, and three. Um, one. If the county offices are closed by the chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners due to inclement weather, all closed departments uh, county employees will receive their regular scheduled pay. Paid time off will be deducted for this closure. Departments must remain operational but have employees unable to report to work may choose to provide regular scheduled administrative pay or allow employees to use their PTO. So that was one. Did you want me to read two and three? Or did you guys have an opportunity? Or you wanted that off till later?
No.
Okay.
I think we need to go ahead and load on it.
Okay.
I think it's
I preferred three, but
I I did too.
I did too. It's shorter, sweeter, but yeah, so. Um, okay, so there's two parts though, because that'll be, so you prefer number three of of the and then
Second grouping.
Of the second grouping.
Yeah.
In the event that the chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners declares a closure of county offices due to inclement weather, all closed department county employees shall receive their regular scheduled pay. During the closure, paid time off will not be utilized. Departments, including emergency services, dispatch, road and bridge, sheriff's deputies, and corrections officers, which are required to remain operational, may experience circumstances when employees are unable to report for duty. In such instances, department heads shall have the authority to either provide regular scheduled administrative pay or to require employees to use their PTO as appropriate. Okay, and that will be coupled with the verbiage, which was there a verbiage that you guys had? I guess basically that I'll just say the chair is going to look for guidance from our emergency management director on when I would call that, make that call to close county offices. So and that'll be in the handbook as well. So I would look for a motion to adopt the second. And I'll print this off for the minutes. Um, but the number three that I just read aloud.
Right.
And I'll get that printed off to include in our minutes. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, still moved. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. So just
I never thought of it just now. What about who's initiating? The is it gonna be initiated? You say you're gonna be looking for guidance.
So I talked to James about that and I think it's he would reach out to me when when it gets to that level because I mean, I'm not a weather expert. And you know, if he has concerns, he would be the one to point to me and say, hey.
I think that really needs to be specified about who's initiating because he might be waiting for you thinking the
Yep, no, and he and I talked about that.
All right, just as long as it's clear.
Yeah, we'll make sure that between he and I, the the conversation is is in the employee handbook so that everybody knows what to expect. Okay, good. So that's them. Um, so next we have Brian Oswald, the maintenance director, um, is gonna give us an update on we received an email that the Kansas State Historical Society had some concerns about courthouse renovations. So if you want to come up, Brian?
So when we started doing all this uh, planning and everything, I had reached out and talked to the historical society and then meanwhile, with everything that happened, I never got back to them. We have since reached out to them and they're reviewing. I I don't think there's anything that we're damaging that historical property. You know, everything we're doing is more cosmetic. Even though it looks like we're doing a lot, it's basically cosmetic uh, and moving of rooms, but touching the historical trim and all that, we're not doing that. So I think we're gonna be fine. They're gonna get back with me. When they do, they will know. And so that's, I mean, I don't know why I skipped that process, but I did. So now we'll take it. Uh, ask for forgiveness and see that I get it. Go from there.
Hey, so you were in contact with them and we have a
We got it here.
Perfect.
Well, it don't sound like there's anything that would have probably tipped us off that we really had to ask in a way permission for that we were doing anything out of the scope that we normally do.
Not, not so much, but probably should have.
Well, you should have, but I mean, it's not like we're trying to dodge.
No, we're not trying to hide anything from them. I think that when people come in and they see that, they maybe they think that.
Well.
We removed a lot of stuff around. I moved the courtroom out there. You know, that's a lot of historical furniture that we moved out, but it's all still intact and uh, I've got everything still here, still, you know, going back in. So I think we're fine.
And it said that they received a call from a concerned citizen. So uh, appreciate you doing your due diligence to make sure that history and everything's being preserved and just
I, Roger's had a lot of experience with that. I reached out to him, just bitten more or less and talking to him. And so he's helped me on that too. So
Perfect.
I can't pay the credit for all that. It's, it's in the process.
Awesome.
We, we have a history of being very good at complying with them. Uh, you ask what would have uh, tipped this off and caused this. Uh, we got a building permit. And anytime you get a building permit, it sets this action in order. We wrote Bethany Ballvia, I wrote her a nice letter. I sent her the plans. I sent her the information and the permit that we received. Uh, it's requesting her to forgive us for our non-compliance and we want to get back into. But I am comfortable having dealt with this for many, many years, that there is nothing that we are doing that would be contrary to where they want to be. And that uh, she, she has handed it over to another review team. It would not surprise me. It's been two weeks now. And it would not surprise me if uh, if they let it run thirty days and then ignore it. Because if if it goes thirty days, it should automatically approve. So.
Also, just an update, they'll be moving into the new room on Tuesday of next week. So uh, it should all be complete and ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next we have Mark Zeltner, Finance Director. He owes for consideration.
I have four purchase orders. They are lease payments that are due. Um, the first one is to Exchange Bank. It is payment number five of ten for twenty twenty-two Ford F three fifty. Another twenty twenty-two Ford F three fifty and a pedal hitch hydraulic tilt trailer. Um, the loan was originated February January of twenty-three. So we're halfway through it. Um, the loan amount remaining is seventy-three thousand five ninety-seven thirty-two. But we are, like I said, payment five of ten is fifteen thousand, six oh eight twenty-five.
All right, I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director to Exchange Bank and Trust in the amount of fifteen thousand, six oh eight twenty-five. Out of road and bridge. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
The second um, purchase order that I have is to First Option Bank of Troy. And that's for lease pa- purchase payment three of fourteen. It's for a twenty twenty-four T eight eighty dump truck. Um, this payment is for twenty thousand, five eighty-seven eighty-nine. The loan um, still has a hundred ninety-six thousand, oh seventy hundred ninety-six thousand, seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, we took this out in December of twenty-three. So payment three of fourteen.
And I look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our finance director to First, First Option Bank in the amount of twenty thousand, five eighty-seven eighty-nine. And this is out of the road and bridge budget.
So. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
The third one is to First Option Bank of Troy again. Again, lease purchase payment three of fourteen. This one was, this loan was taken out the same time as the previous one. Um, for a twenty eighteen T eight eighty dump truck. Uh, this payment is for twenty-four thousand, eight sixty-one eighty-six. Like I said, it was taken out the same time, so in twenty twenty-three. How much is remaining is a hundred and sixty thousand three oh nine seventy-four.
I got a question. Why are those not together?
They're separate loans, so I didn't put them together.
Okay, but I would have thought that they probably were.
They were. I think they were actually bought separate times.
One was in June, one was in December. Okay, that split them up. All right. But thank you.
I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director to First Option Bank in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents um, out of the road and bridge budget.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
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 Okay, the fourth one is to First Option Bank of Troy. Um, lease purchase payment two of fourteen for a twenty twenty-four CAT motor grader and a twenty twenty-three CAT track loader. The payment is for twenty-six thousand, four sixty-eight sixty-seven. The loan was taken out February of twenty-four. And it has two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine fifty-four fifty-nine remaining.
For a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director, First Option Bank in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents out of the road and bridge budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Um, I put together a little recap, um, which I sent you guys an email, but I have a paper copy if you want to see it too. But just to recap this in twenty-five in in twenty twenty-five are lease payments is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Roughly. So on these four, these are the only four lease payments we have. This is half of it. It was eighty-seven thousand, five twenty-six sixty-seven was the total. Um, we'll pay the other half in August, August fifteenth or so. And then that'll take care of the lease payments. We do have the bond payments coming up. Um, the first payment will be in April. So you'll probably see me again about the end of March to approve those. Um, those bond payments for twenty-five is five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred. So the total for twenty twenty-five is seven hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred. And every, every year um, we're gonna go down just a little bit as we pay off principal and less interest, but it looks like the bond payments one will fall off in twenty-eight, the other one will fall off in twenty-nine.
Can you tell me the difference of those two? Which one? The bridge was first, twenty-eight and twenty-nine's road?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And do the bout or the payments, do you have a breakdown of them for this year?
Yes, uh, the bridge bond is two thirty-nine, six fifty-six.
Thank you.
And the road bond is three twenty-six, one oh nine. And so this little debt tracking sheet uh, kind of will help us for budgeting purposes with road and bridge, since all of this does come out of their budget. Um, but then we can see as we're progressing forward to a capital improvement plan. When the payment falls off and you can see, oh, well, twenty thirty, you know, that would free up additional money if the county wants to do something else with more equipment or another bond for roads or or something like that. So it just kind of tracks it as the years go on.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just messaged Corey to see if he was still here and let him know or had a schedule. If not, I mean, if you guys are okay with it, I can move around based on who is here um, to keep things rolling, but I just thought.
Yeah.
We're not that far off. I thought Corey might be in the building, so just give him a minute to. So would you be okay moving up?
It's a little bit few seconds.
Okay. Yeah, are you guys okay if I invite Joe up?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so Joe Snyder, um, Road and Bridge Superintendent. He was scheduled for eleven-thirty and we're just gonna bump him up today for considerations of purchase order. Schwab Eaton Engineering for uh, Ottawa Road.
And P O to Schwab Eaton the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this will be coming out of special highway. This is part of the money that we set aside last year.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve uh, this purchase order to Schwab Eaton in the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars as presented by a road and bridge superintendent, um, coming out of special highway. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Um, one thing I forgot to mention in my commissioner comments, that we just wanted to, um, the township meeting has been set.
If we don't send it out.
Okay, March tenth at six P M in the Blue Building in F.
Yes.
One other thing note that and it might be, I don't know what our options are. Um, at the Farm Bureau Christmas party, um, it was brought to me the speed of the traffic on McPherson through Cummings from the highway to Two Thirtyeth. How how I mean, there's little kids playing and the church is right there and all the things. Um, didn't know, are speed bumps or anything to deter speed along there applicable? Or is there a process? Or is that something? I'm just, I guess, asking because we kind of were standing there brainstorming and it's one of those things when when people are witnessing children almost get hit, it's like we need to have the conversation or or look at solutions or brainstorm something and
What is the speed limit there?
Twenty.
I think it's twenty.
I I look, I looked at it when I was on the highway this weekend. I glanced over to see and I'm pretty sure it's twenty because it's, it's so congested right there with the church and the houses, just that little block. But people are just flying and being, not being mindful of uh, of the speed limit or the fact that you're in that little congested area. So just wanted to bring that up if uh, if speed bumps could be an option just to I mean, once they hit them once, they'll remember and not and slow down. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
This is the first time we've
Yep.
We've had this, so I will look into what we can
Similar situation here after we fixed, when the road got fixed, you know, hearing was, uh, we had requests for
Tends to that happens whenever we improve.
The road.
And the speed tends to increase drastically. I can see what we can do.
Yeah. So the concern is just the little kids in in the town getting kicked.
Totally understand it.
So.
So, nope, I will see what I can do.
Okay. And I thought I I can send an email also to law enforcement just to let them know that stretch is concerning. I mean, if if they're ever out there.
Sit there.
Yeah. But that's all I know from.
Is it? Now, is any of a big truck traffic? A lot of it's big truck traffic.
Um, it was mentioned that some of it is big truck traffic, yes.
Now, is there uh, any, anyway, I could find out where those are coming from.
Yep, absolutely.
So if you can send that to me in an email.
Yep.
Then I will see what I can do about that.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so all right. Well, Blair, are you okay if we move you up?
Uh, yeah, I just Roger's got most of the okay, conversation.
Okay.
I'm probably listening.
I have Blair Burton, Register of Deeds. And Roger Denton, G I S Coordinator, Review of Milner Boundary Adjustment in Potters. Thank you.
I'm going to give you each a copy of this you can look at. This issue is not new, this, this issue popped up about. Ten years ago. Uh, there's strip of land. Highlighted in yellow on this.
Thank you.
Um, it's. Illustration I'm giving you. That. We show no owner of record for. Since the plat was created back in eighteen eighty-seven. For ten years, and Pat's very familiar with this, uh, they have. Just. Whoever owned the piece on the corner, this is in Potter Bennett Springs is the subdivision of Potter. And whoever owns the property on the corner has actually built a building over this. Uh, but they have no clear trail of ownership, and so they keep coming in and asking us to move the property line, and our point has been. We don't just move property lines. If I move it there, then the other person is going to complain because it isn't where it's supposed to be. And I don't care if they both come in. There needs to be a document that says, hey, I don't care. Uh, this, this does not give them. Clear title to the property. They need to take legal action to get clear title of the property, but what this does. Uh, they have a surveyor involved and both of them have done it. You've noticed several times in the past few months, we've done. Boundary Adjustment Plats. And the reason why. If it's a plat, it's signed by all the owners and the courts acknowledge that the owners were all aware of it. If it's not a plat. It may create descriptions. But the courts have contended over the years that. The owners don't necessarily know what's happening, and so those hold no. Legal rights to the property. There have to be other documents to transfer those property events. In this case. What we're doing is. We're trying to establish. Uh, the. The surveyors has moved the property line. He understands that it doesn't do anything except move the location of the property line. You can see actually found the pins where the property line is currently located. But in doing this and getting all the signatures on it, then I went to Blair and I asked for her assistance in. Why normally if we're doing a boundary line adjustment, you've heard me here saying this before. Why do we have to get this signed by you? Because if you're not doing dedications or easements, there's nothing for you necessarily to act upon and. Blair was wonderful about it. She went to her people, um, her people didn't want to answer for a long time.
No, yeah.
And then finally, when they did, they said, well, we really don't see any reason for it either. And so now we're at a point where since it's on there already, she doesn't want to record it unless you reviewed it and signed it. Because the blank is already there and it's that far along on the process. But in the future, we will, unless you want us to, we won't bring all these boundary adjustments back to you. Here is, and it's not only happening on your end, it's happening on the city's end also, because I've had boundary adjustment plaques being done in the city. That move those lines and those in the city's. Own ordinance, it says they are called a minor plat revision. And those minor plat revisions are approved by staff. And so they don't even go to the commission, and so when we demand the commission to sign it, it creates them a new problem also. So we're going to be on the same page and it's going to be easier moving this forward, and so in this case, I'm explaining to you why. This is being done because you are being asked to sign it. And and it's that little strip you see in yellow and it won't change ownership. All it does is say. We're gonna start taxing the other person for it. Is that a fair legal statement?
Because it was currently just no. No owner.
No, we've currently had it on. Uh, included in the property on the west, or excuse me, on the east. And and we're moving it to the property on the west. We've been taxing someone on it for a year.
So it's been on A, but it's moving to B.
No, it's been on B, we're moving to A.
Okay. And the the signatures on, you have partial A and B signatures.
Yes.
Everybody's on board.
Yeah.
So I would look for a motion to approve the Milner Boundary Line Adjustment as presented, um, by a Register of Deeds and G I S, um, coordinator.
So let me get this straight. Right now. We're just approving this particular. Adjustment. Adjustment, okay, but what you were saying was. Going forward, you would like. Us not to have to even see this, is that what you were hitting at?
The law says you don't have to.
Yeah.
Their rules say you don't have to sign it, so we're saying there's really no reason to bring these all into you unless you tell me, no, we want to see them all. It's just what it does is it adds two more weeks to everybody's process somehow.
The reason that you're in the loop is. Sometimes, I shouldn't say sometimes, almost all the time. These will involve some. Infrastructure, some road usually. Uh, but this one doesn't, and but when it involves a. A road, then you need to be. Involved. I mean, you're agreeing to take on responsibility for a road being open, for example. You should at least be asked whether you want to take that responsibility, so. Yeah, I agree. So we can, yeah, I'll, I'll. So move on this and then.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been.
If you want to do that, and then we can discuss.
Future.
Okay, so it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero. Did you want us to sign one?
Thank you.
So you would like to see discussion on future properties, whether or not we'll be involved, so Blair.
At at this point. The, you know, both. Parties have agreed, you've got to sign off on that. Um, and that's the only. Point at which this process gets to us. If there's an agreement, in other words. There wouldn't be a contentious. Situation where the county needs to. Get involved, you would have that settled before it ever gets here.
So my understanding from my, um, fellow R D. She said that since we don't have a zoning. Or commission board for. The county and there's no zoning regulations and if there's no dedications, easements or subdivision regulations, there's no need for a commission to see this and sign it. But if if plaques come in with. Easements, dedications, anything like that. I have to have your approval, I have to have your signature on it.
To answer your question. You will never get one to attend argument.
Okay.
It will not come to you unless all the parties have signed off on it or have agreed to sign off on it. You did one before where you approved it. Before the signatures because that was Cargill Gunderson and the signatures were. In three different parts of the globe and it was going to take him a month to get them. And I, and they were all agreeing to it, they were just saying. Until it's been here and they know it's going to get approved, they didn't want to send this all over the country to get it done.
And on that one, we actually made the verbiage that contingent upon owners, um, approval, so then when it was done, I just got to sign it. Because it was, it was, everybody approved.
That's why we're doing this. They will never come to you unless all the parties agree on it. You won't, you won't find yourself in a contentious situation now where you might find yourself. Easements and dedications, what those are is if there's. Utility easements crossing one property to another, or. If there are dedications of public space. That is going to be a burden to the taxpayers or add to the public realm. Then those things you would need to approve, we have, we're not asking on those at all. You're going to be involved in any approvals of those. These are simply spots where they've been previous, previously. Platted. In most every case previously platted, this is a previous subdivision. And the two owners are trying to adjust the boundary between the two properties. And these occur way more often than you think. Uh, the problem is up to now, they've just done a survey. Well, the problem with that is that if they just do a survey and they don't do a replat of it, then. They somehow keep transferring those old legal descriptions. And then you end up with the people not owning the property they think they own, and we've got that. Issue in several locations right now, where I go back to the title company and say you used old descriptions. And not the new descriptions on this, and the question is, how do they know that this new survey was done? It's the age old, how do you keep people informed? So. That's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blair.
So we have like five minutes if we want to wait and report and then get back on.
Thank you. At least got it closer to the face.
Have you talked with Susan about putting? The positions for the multi-county health department? On online, again, availability.
Not yet. I probably need to check with Christina first. She's been emailing with more information, so I just want to make sure that.
Okay.
Cause she's actually in Atchison lately, she's been manning our local department, so. I just want to make sure she can send me the parameters. I mean, I read the bylaws and I understand what they say. But with the transition of voting on new bylaws, I just want to make sure. I guess that if I use the new bylaw verbiage that's being voted on in March, that's okay. Does that make sense? Cause it talks like specifically about medical. Well. I have it somewhere. I'll just read you what she sent me. The board shall be composed of a county commissioner from each of the counties, Atchison, Brown, Jackson. The board shall also consist of a consumer. Of medical services from each of the counties. And a provider of medical services from each of the counties, so. And a member of the board shall be appointed by the respective board of county commissioners. So anyway, I just want to make sure the verbiage is right and we all know what we're soliciting for, so consumer can be anyone. But the.
Member large, basically.
Yeah, but then the provider of medical services and then make sure we have, we can reach out to those respective. Groups to find. Someone. See, and she was explaining to me because I was under the assumption that Dr. Tackett was that person. But she's the medical director.
Yes.
So I I thought, because again, going back to when you guys were. On before I was commissioner and watching your COVID things, Mrs. Tackett was always, Dr. Tackett was always on there. So I thought she was one of the board people, but she's the medical director.
Correct.
Appointed by. Multi-county.
Yes.
Got it. So, yeah, I just want to make sure, but yes, I will get the information to her, so we can.
Because it's gonna be, there's this switcheroo here.
Well, and then she'll, we'll want to put in there because it talks about the terms. So, yeah, we'll, we'll review that and get it put out there. Alright, so we have Corey Scott EMS Director, twenty twenty-four Atchison County EMS report.
Alright, so. Twenty twenty-four response report. Uh, has the commission all had time to review that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, I think the bullet points for me. Are an increase over last year of two hundred and two responses. It's probably one of the most, most important aspects of this. Um, the other one that. We talked about earlier when I presented it. In workshop is the eight hundred and sixty-two calls. More than when we started this ambulance service, so I think those are two big bullet points in this. I'd like to point out, you know, response times. Very happy with them. And that is all the curves. Hundred percent their effort, their good work. And their commitment to being very good at what they do. So. Cannot commend them enough. That's, that's them, not me. So. That's probably, you know, my big bullet points in it. I don't know what questions the commission would have.
I noticed your response times in twenty-four, um, are actually better than the twenty-three report, so that's incredible.
Little bit.
Yep.
Yep, and again, that's all on the employees, that's, that's their commitment to doing their job well and. And proving it through actual statistics.
Well, not to take anything away from the employees, but I think it's also, uh, shows leadership, um, and that's. The statistics that you provided, since I was here when the, uh. Ambulance sent was taken back over by the county from taxiing. The stats were provided. To show where we were at and how, and it was to kind of. Gauge our effectiveness and where we needed. Uh, attention to, and, uh, that's at. At the time, that was, um. You know, we really, I know as a member then, I really digested it because like where we at. But they've been consistent and been consistently getting better, so. I think it's good leadership also.
I appreciate that, but I would again defer to my employees being the reason this works.
Well, I'm not taking anything away from them, I think it's, it is a package deal.
Thank you though.
I felt that it was interesting, the statistic of. The increase of calls from seventeen to. To twenty twenty-four. But also more fascinating is the fact that you handle those calls with how many people of like extra people versus when you.
Well, yeah, we talked about that. When we first started out in twenty seventeen. Uh, we ran five-person crews, that was two staffed ambulances and a captain and paramedic fly car. And then we'd do an on-call person if we got in a bind that the captain or I could call back in. So we've had that increase of forty-five, forty-seven percent call volume since twenty seventeen, and we're only doing that with three more people total.
Mind blowing.
Um, so, yeah, we went from staffing five people at all times, plus myself and my assistant. Uh, during the day. To now staffing six people at all times, plus myself and assistant during the day. So. Yeah. As we've discussed in the past, with call volume continuing to rise. The transfer volume continuing to rise, the transfer distance is continuing to be further away. We had talked about several times over the last few weeks. Is it time to expand and add a few more people because? You know, the workload, especially on the, the first out East Truck is getting to be substantial. So we've got fatigue worries, you know. We've got concerns about, you know, the ultimate. My most important responsibility as the chief of emergency service is the safety of my people. That absolutely has to come first, so. You know, we talked about it at this commission, gonna bring it up again, but at what point? Do we expand staffing or say this is, this is where we're at and this is the service we can provide, so. Ultimately, that's going to be decision of this board. On, on where we go from here. So, but I think the numbers bear it out, we're just simply busier.
Well, and also you can't project nine-one-one responses, like it's.
I, I don't have an answer.
Yeah.
Does where it's going.
Increases of, or two hundred calls is.
This month, March is the twentieth year I've been. A full-time paramedic in one form or another in Atchison County under. Four different ambulance service names at this point. Um, when I took over the ambulance service, when you hired me as a commission, and I realize Eric's. The, one of the, the ones left. You could set your watch to the call volume at that point. It was gonna be seventeen hundred to maybe nineteen hundred calls top in. I knew the blueprint walking into this. You know, I didn't expect what we're seeing now. Since then, um, I had no indicator that it was gonna go up. I mean, we, we'd all planned on. The baby boomer generation starting to have more health problems. They call it the gray wave. I don't know if this is a peak, a plateau, or. I don't have that answer, you know. Maybe a year from now, we'll be talking about four hundred calls less. Maybe we'll be talking about four hundred more.
But this is industry-wide, it's not.
This is industry-wide. This is not just here. I, I speak to other ones, um. Um, hopefully Duke, Cobridge and Brown County uh is okay with me saying it, but. Their volumes up too in a neighboring county. They're, they're just simply running more calls as well, so.
Realize too, when. There, uh, the stat that you mentioned this morning, was how many? How long the time they're actually out of county now versus.
Yeah.
Well, that also. Has fuel, has tires, has mileage, that's.
Oil changes.
Everything that goes along with that too, so.
You know, that's something that definitely factors in. Is overtime, because if these calls occur at six thirty-seven in the morning, an hour, an hour and a half before shift change, we're gonna have to pay them overtime during these calls. And that's, that's affected budget and affects. You know, staffing and this types of things. So to your point. Uh, we figured out because forty-seven percent of our transfers went to Saint Joseph, Missouri. In twenty seventeen and now only thirty-one point eight percent go to Saint Joe. Because we're taking transfers to further away places. Um. Compared to twenty seventeen, our ambulances are out of the county fifteen and a half more days in twenty twenty-four than they were. In twenty seventeen. So that's kind of the, the raw number on that. And that has a lot more to do with distance away than it does necessarily the, the transfer volume, but the transfer volume is up too. Little over a hundred calls. Hundred transfers, I apologize. We're just busy.
So, we've been dealing with the, the question from Amberwell about. Their transfers. So that's, I don't think that's come into this conversation as of. The last couple of minutes, but we've been dealing with that. The last. Couple of weeks, week or so. And so my question is, if. The county. Chooses to increase manning. That's gonna be a benefit both of these. Situations, gonna benefit your nine-one-one concern, your calls. And it'll help, maybe not a hundred percent, but it will cut into that. You know, the, the, the transfers and the. Uh, that, that Amberwell is complaining about, that they're not having enough, so. We could possibly.
I don't think we could alleviate it all.
Right.
But we can mitigate, we could help more. But again, it comes down. To what, you know, this commission decides the budget for this organization is, and it's a considerable expense to add. Uh, three FTEs to our budget, you know, there's, there's payroll, there's benefits. There's retirement, all those things that go along with adding full-time. Slots.
Help me understand, we're currently have three ambulances running. If we added the crew that we're talking about, you would put your fourth one in service?
No, we would still staff three, but we would bring back more consistently that paramedic fly car.
Okay.
So.
Fly car to assess prior to.
Yeah, we would still staff three. There would still be, when Courtney and I are available during the day, a fourth ambulance one available. But what that would give us the ability to do is rotate the workload a little more efficiently. Amongst the two ambulances staffed in Atchison. And then give us that flexibility to have that fly car in those situations when we're a little more overwhelmed with call volume. So it would give me the ability to. To have more flexible options. The only way we're just gonna run a lot more transfers of them is to add six people. But then that goes into a whole new situation of expanding. The facility, cause right now we wouldn't have enough bunk rooms. At the moment, I, we're actually making another bunk room down there at the moment. My crew is moving my office. We're turning my office to. A captain's office with a bed in it and creating a new bunk room. So just in case that's the decision we make, I'm gonna have that. But if we add six new people, I mean, it's gonna be double cost and the facilities are gonna have to be expanded with some, some level of actual construction. So. I would not be. By adding three people, we wouldn't be alleviating Amberwell's concerns. We would just be able to be a little more flexible in addressing their concerns. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, thank you.
And then. You know, we probably need to talk about, at some point, we need to talk about two issues, possibly expanding personnel, but also. The pay, I mean, you, you stressed that. We've got some counties, you know, adjacent counties that are. That have gone that route. They've increased. They've increased the salaries. And us being so close. Would make sense that we need to look at that.
Yeah, we compete very directly with Kansas City area. Lenoir County is our bridge to that and they've, they've accepted, I believe, that they're competing with that Kansas City area. The problem at hand in that terms is, is the paramedics. Paramedics, as we've discussed in the past, are. A limited quantity at this point, um. And the competition for paramedics is very high. Everybody in the state is essentially in the same situation as us. They're understaffed. And it is very difficult to recruit paramedics, um. Being told, you know, that uh paramedics are not renewing their licenses at a high rate. And I've also been told that the percentages of paramedics in the state of Kansas that are doing EMS as a career has dropped drastically. I could get you the board of EMS's slides on that. They, they put out a, a briefing to the directors across the state and that's where that information is coming from. So. There is only so many paramedics. There is a lot more paramedic positions than there are people willing to fill them at this point. You know, as a paramedic in the state, you have a lot more employment opportunities than just an ambulance service. We're competing against fire departments. Who wanna staff paramedics. We're competing against hospitals that wanna staff paramedics. And frankly, because if you train in the state of Kansas, you come out with an associate's degree, we're competing against completely different fields that are willing to hire people just because they have. Completed a degree, I mean. So as a paramedic in the state, your options are pretty vast. It's, it's, it's a sought-after thing. So. You know, money I've always been told is a short-term motivator, but. It is a right now problem too, so it is something I, I would ask that you consider. And that, you know. We, we look at that going forward as. As much retention as it is recruitment, we need to, we need to acknowledge the people that have stayed with us and worked hard for us. So. That is something again that's on the table for three of you and. I realize the economic situation. I realize the budget situation. I, I understand all of it and it's a difficult decision and it's a tough position for us all to be in.
Taking care of our citizens should be prioritized, I mean.
I believe so. I might be biased because the ambulance and rescue squad are my responsibility and I'm proud of them and I'm proud of what they do and. They're, they're overworked and. Underpaid and we're stretched thin and. So yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit biased on that when I see how well these people do this job. And I also understand when they look around at their own lives and go, I gotta have more money to live and I see those opportunities elsewhere. Yeah, I'm not angry at these people. I wanna keep them, but I'm not angry at them.
Any other questions, Corey?
Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to say something to the commission. Uh, last week. Um, I'm gonna let Commissioner Quinn address some of this with the hospital as we talked about, so I'm gonna keep this limited. But I do wanna stress that last week. The Atchison County Commission, I believe, stood up for what was right. And included me in a meeting that I had asked to be excluded from. And did it on camera and transparent. And I know as elected officials, scrutiny and criticism is more the norm. People of this county need to know that the three of you, this board as a whole. Stood up for what was right and I'm very appreciative of that and I'm glad I was not excluded from that meeting last week. Thank you. And I, I do think on camera, somebody should acknowledge what you did. So, thank you very much. Thank you. So.
And did you wanna clarify the ventilator?
Oh, yeah, I almost forgot about that. I, um. I did wanna have an opportunity to rebut just a little bit on some of the things. Um. Ms. Sorensen in the meeting last week had expressed that trans, or excuse me, ventilators. Have been modified for transport purposes and then were being loaned to us for transport purposes. I wanna stress this is not true. I would never allow a FDA prescription device that had been modified. In any way, shape or form on our ambulances. And we would never, ever put our people in a position where they were having to make life and death decisions on a critical patient with a piece of equipment they'd never seen, much less trained on. I'm gonna. Stress that that has not occurred and it would not occur under me, so. Wanted to make sure the public heard that. That was a very concerning comment for me, especially when they said modified. Uh, Amy Folsom and I over the years have talked about a shared resource to where the hospital. And the uh ambulance service possibly. Shared an actual transport ventilator that had never come to fruition. The ventilators that the hospital acquired during COVID, uh KDHE very clearly stated those were not for ambulance use and we never did utilize them. Uh, in the meantime, thanks to the Patterson Family Grant. Thank you very much and thank you, Mark. Who acquired that grant for us. We have acquired ventilators for each ambulance now. The crew trained on those last week. Thursday of this week, Dr. Leck and I are meeting to put together a protocol for those and hopefully they'll be on each ambulance very soon. I don't have a deadline yet because. The ventilators have some capabilities we've never had protocol for, including uh BiPAP. Which is something I'm excited about because the hospital uses BiPAP extensively. And it's a really good device for patients in respiratory distress, so we have to develop a protocol before that can go on the truck, which also. Goes back to, we don't put equipment on the truck, we're not trained on. So. Very happy those ventilators are coming, especially again, considering they're gonna be multipurpose devices that provide CPAP and BiPAP. Which BiPAP is actually a trade name. It's bi-level uh airway support, but. Nonetheless, everybody knows that it's BiPAP, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, have a good day.
You too.
Hey, next we have Polly Hackthorn, the county bracer. Um, she's here to visit with us about Atchison County property type value discussion.
Thank you. And so far, I've just got twenty-four and twenty-three. And there, so the top one's gonna be appraised value, bottom one's gonna be assessed value. And these are based off the certification values that were certified to the court for those years.
I found these interesting, cause I had, um, I didn't understand, so the not-for-profit is specifically the five oh one C threes. Versus the tax exempt would fall under. Like the um municipalities. Like, is that the difference of those two? Okay. Is my brain that was like, I know they were exempt, so they would all just be exempt, but then the breakdown is not-for-profit would be. All of our local five oh one CDs, okay. And farm. Would be farmstead.
Right.
Not, and agriculture is your tillable or your pasture, the ground, so.
Because farm still has it, still carries that eleven and a half percent assessment rate for the home site.
Yep, okay. Um. And then vacant. Would be, um.
Like a little vacant lots that are in town.
Okay, so more um urban vacant lots.
Yeah.
Not, okay. And your timber. Would all fall under the agriculture. And other would just be. Random.
It is, and that's one thing I've been cleaning up each year, um. Because there are, you know. Instances where I've ran across, you know, and a parcel and, you know, all the neighboring. Is ag and I'm like, why is this one considered other?
Yeah.
So it's just every year I've reevaluated.
And your assessed values, can you explain the difference of the excess versus the appraised? Because. I know the state requires you to be in compliance of that ninety, one hundred and ten percent, right?
That, that's our market value.
The market value, which you gave us last Tuesday, which we put out that, hey, we're expecting this residential ten percent increase could be four percent in some areas.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. So the appra, so your appraised value is, is your market value, really? Um, then you take that times the assessment rate to get your assessed value and the assessment rate's gonna vary because like. Um, commercials twenty-five percent, residential's eleven and a half percent, um. Vacants twelve. Uh, farm homesites eleven and a half percent, commercials twenty-five. Uh, others thirty.
Residential was eleven and a half. Vacants twelve, not-for-profit and exempts are obviously, like, they don't pay any.
They don't, they don't. The, um, the exempt is not, the not-for-profit.
But the value's still staying, so like for exempt, for instance, um. In twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Three hundred and twenty-three million, is that? Six hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars is. Is appraised value not being taxed for ad lorn taxes because they have the exempt status, so.
Majority of that's gonna be like your Benedictine, your school districts, your hospital, um, any clinics that have applied for exemption.
Okay. And so when you're looking at the pie. Those dollars that are non-taxable are made up. And the revenues from, from the rest of. What we need. And you said, uh, agriculture was. A, what, what is the percentage on?
Um, land, land's twenty-five, buildings thirty.
Okay, thank you. And commercial is twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. I have that backwards. Ag lands thirty, buildings twenty-five.
Okay. So the.
That's the assessed rate on farm, it's thirty. But then it's not necessarily, that's not. The tax. Where it's taxed, it's taxed on use.
Ag, ag land is used value, yes, yes.
So your appraised amounts, and then if you multiply that by your percentages to get your assessed. Right. Yeah, this is interesting. This is, um. Good information to have. Good information to understand. Um, as well as like when we get through our budget process, you know. How, I mean, the needs based on our expenditures. When you look at the revenues, yeah, where it's coming from, right?
Yeah, that's a.
And.
The exempts are a big part of the pie.
They are.
But I'm kind of surprised that it went down in twenty-three and twenty-four. I mean, one percent, but it did go down. No. Depends on what, there's so many different categories. What are we talking about? Well, if you look at the, just the appraised. Uh, twenty-three is twenty-two percent. And, and we're talking about exempt, Pierce and Black. But uh twenty-four is twenty-one percent.
But the numbers went up.
The numbers went up.
But it's a percent.
Overall percentages.
Which I was kind of.
Residential went up. Farm went down. Which is interesting, cause the farmsteads. And agriculture, sometimes farmsteads include the agriculture. I guess just knowing the total of like what the ag is producing in our.
Isn't there also agricultural? Improvements?
Yeah, that, the ag buildings. Yeah, it's the same as the commercial. Yeah, thank you for providing this, this is interesting.
Yes, it is, very helpful.
I was gonna try to go back a few more years. Um I'll have to do that after. Our crunch line.
Yeah, I don't know how far back you can go, which. Like to go back five years, kind of like benchmark to see where they relate.
Right.
And into that.
Yep.
Would it be fair to say that most the exempt? Would be if taxable commercial. Type properties?
Yes.
Okay, so like. That's a huge twenty-five percent of. Three hundred and twenty-three, three hundred and twenty-four million, if you're doing rounding, I mean, that's a, that's a huge. Amount of money.
Most definitely.
Yeah, this is, so we talked about. This information and how it could be useful. So if you're planning five, ten, fifteen years out. For economic development purposes in your community. Um you know, I I don't know if there's ever a cutoff. Where the city says, or the county says, okay, we're. Maxed out on exempt. Properties, you know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think there is no.
Well, I I'm just saying as a, as a. For somebody who's planning ahead. And looking at their income and trying to figure out how do we survive?
Yep.
Without going back to our tax, you know, our property taxpayers. Citizens are saying we need more, we need more, we need more. And one way is to limit. Your community to a cutoff on on, you know, how many exempt. Properties you invite in to.
But we, as a commission, don't have any say on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, some of it happens regardless, but. If if you're a. We don't have, we don't have the zoning that we can. Work with, like there, there has to be, somebody has to look at this. Information and and. And ask, okay, could this be part of the reason that we? Um have the. Uh you know, the. Mills that we do, that we're stuck at where we're at and. This consistent, and I'm not saying we're alone in this, other communities are dealing with the same. The same issue. But uh it is nice to have the information in front of you, so you can. Use it to plan ahead, so to that to that point, some of it is like. What Amberlove just. Late in.
This last year.
Late in the year exempted a. Property, I think, one final property investor have all been exempted. They added it to that, so we didn't have a choice, they were, they were gonna do that regardless.
And so that's what I kind of want to understand, though, not-for-profit, the like the five oh one C three status. Any five oh one C three that owns the building that they reside in would fall under our not-for-profit. But the exempt status. Cause for his um example of Amberwell, they're five oh one C three. Because we are the conduit for their grants and all the things, but are they falling under exempt or under?
They're falling under exempt.
And and why?
They've applied through BOTA to get that full exemption.
Not because they're nonprofit, but because they're.
Yeah, it's something that's not automatic, it's something that they have to.
So that's, okay, so the exempt would be not automatic, it would be a reason why they're exempt. Or they're a municipality where you're tax exempted anyways, okay? And then. What about um properties? It's it's, this is all derived from ownership, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if a not-for-profit is renting.
Or not technically ownership, but classification.
Is it also governmental?
Um.
Like the county lake. I mean, it's owned by the county.
So it's correct, so that would fall under the exempt, okay?
But the the taxes um. Classified by use or by, so I'm, okay, if I own a building downtown and I rent to a nonprofit. I'm still responsible, it would still be commercial, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't, it can't be. Exe- it can't be not-for-profit if I'm renting to a not-for-profit.
I mean, they can, they can apply it.
Oh, they really can.
They, I mean, if if they, I mean, that's solely up to BOTA if they're gonna prove.
Okay.
The documentation.
That's what I was trying, yeah, so people can, if if I wanna rent my. Downtown space to a nonprofit, I could have an argument that.
Because it's taxed on use.
Yep, okay, interesting.
Yeah. That's.
The history of the case law on voted decisions is all over the place, which is why there are a lot of amendments to that statutes. And it. The exact thing that you talked about has come up, if there's a privately owned building that's being rented for. Uh an exempt use, then BOTA has traditionally held that to be. Uh exempt, or excuse me, traditionally held that to be not exempted.
Taxable because they're. Getting income off of that property.
But they have thought. They're getting more, owners of those types of building are getting more creative on how they're classifying and how they're. How they have their business arrangements set up and more of them are becoming exempt.
Awesome. Thank you.
And another thing to keep in mind is, as Eric had mentioned the last meeting, that three percent cap. Um I did talk to property valuation after the meeting. And they indicated that more than likely, we're probably gonna see it on the ballot in November.
Okay.
Um. So there are some exceptions within it, so if, so we still have to determine our market values, we still have to complete all of our analysis. If our market value is greater than that three percent, then we have to cap it at that three percent.
Okay.
Uh. If it falls under that three percent, then we are still gonna roll with our market value. Um.
So that's really good for us to know. Because if put into the hands of the voters, obviously, everybody wants to pay less, right? So that would pass, I I predict, right, my prediction would, that would pass. Um so then what that looks like for us, right, and then the education process to to the public prior to the vote of. When this passes, if you if you pass this, that's great, but like that removes our revenue. This much, so then hard decisions here are made of, okay. You are waiting longer for an ambulance, like, you know, all all the things, right? And and for us to keep those mind in mind, to be proactive, to get them information out to the public, because. It stinks when they don't know. At least you, at least your conscience is clear that you gave them the info and if they wanna vote for it, great, but like, then hard decisions have to come as a. Result of of the choice, so.
So it'll make another step for us in our budgeting process that if we know that the the market analysis that we just put online. That it's going at five percent, but now they're gonna be capped at three. Our budget, we're gonna have to do that extra step to figure out what the maximum that is gonna be available because of that cap.
And if it's something they add, it's it's, take it back, it'll be January one, twenty twenty-six.
Oh, wow, so there's no grace, so we need, yeah, we should probably be.
That will be something that we look at, but the, when would that? Uh. Be voted on, did you say?
November.
November, so our budget will already be cooked.
Yeah, we need to keep this in mind.
We'll have to have a plan B, well, um our budget will be sealed, I don't know.
I mean, I just think we have to.
Adverse roll it back to where we. Can't collect beyond that. Three percent, I don't know.
See, that's the reason that I've been on point on this, it's like, this is raising another, it's almost gonna be yanking the rug out. On on the budgetary figures, because things are gonna change after everything's done.
So if you take twenty twenty-four and you know, you take that as an estimate, cap it by three percent. But then come into play, how many other properties are gonna file for exemption?
But you don't know, you you won't know.
Right, exactly, yes. I mean, there are some exceptions within that. Um like if they, you know, if it excludes, you know, property that has new construction or they add a new improvement. If they change their um, the classification of their property, so the assessment rate changes. Um. If um, let's see. If a property becomes disqualified from an exemption and added back to the tax rules. Um. If it is an escape tax or like if it's added or if there's an error on the property. Uh if there's a legal description of the land, um. That requires a change, so those are exceptions that can take place above that three percent cap.
If it had a new classification, it wouldn't necessarily. Meet the rule for the cap.
Right.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Case by case.
I've got some information. Passed on. From our representatives, state representatives, um one example. They're saying that current software only computes fair market value, adding a new. Taxable value module would require the addition of new calculated. A new calculated field. And also historical tracking throughout. Changes of ownership and other parameters, so. That's another aspect that it's gonna affect, it's you know, probably your software or the county software. Um. To include this other variable now, this new. Uh variable.
And when they do updates to our system or our software for those, it's. They basically do it by parcel count, so like if we have, you know, ninety-eight hundred parcels, they're gonna say, well then, this is your cut of. This update.
And they're they're, from what I understand, talking to. Our two uh. Legislators this weekend is that they're leaning towards a rolling average. Uh versus a three percent cap. Hard cap, they're they're leaning towards a rolling average. Which um, I don't know if that's gonna make it harder or easier for. Somebody like you, uh but uh.
That would be similar to the ag land average, so the. There would be an eight-year rolling average like the farm on residential.
So since it's eight years and then.
The median one, and so then that way it wouldn't be, if there's a spike this year of. Housing goes up fifteen percent, it would be, that would be in the eight. The eight-year average and it would level the spikes. Is the way I, it was explained to me, if that scenario was what's brought up.
Okay.
Uh also on the cap, was that only for residential properties or was that?
This is for real property.
Okay, so ag land would be capped also. So that would even make, that would make a huge number if we're we're doing across the board on that. That's gonna even make a bigger. Uh variance on, it's it's gonna be uh almost impossible to.
I I bet when I go to that budget meeting, so I go to a budget meeting every year at the state, and I I bet this might be something.
Oh, that'll have to be a topic, I mean, how do you?
If they're gonna implement.
Right.
I can eat. That that timeline of putting on the ballot in November and then implementing it.
Just January one.
Yeah, so that just makes us, we have to stay in tune and play worst-case scenario, in my opinion. Um we we need to have, I'm just saying, when we're going through, we're gonna have the twenty twenty-six budget discussion.
Absolutely, well, think of the scenario when we just changed the simple sales tax figure in November. They couldn't implement it for three months, so we couldn't start it till April, but here we would have to have the whole property tax formula. Changed from the November, first week in November to January first. I mean, uh that don't compute.
Don't correct me if I'm wrong, but the money, the the. The money is there, the revenue's there, it's just. How you collect it, so they're saying, we're not gonna collect. Ten, eleven percent. All at once, we're gonna spread it out.
So in the, in the average.
Well, right, that's what I'm saying, they're capping the amount that. You know, taxpayers burden. All at once, you know, when you evaluate a property. Because what's the max now that that you can?
There is.
There is not one.
Okay, so that that. If 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 you're. You know, if you support helping the taxpayer, at least, at least they know that they're not gonna get this huge spike.
But that's, that's why we put out that trend publication indicating, you know, this is, this is what we're seeing, we're seeing that ten percent. Still. I mean, last year we seen that fifteen percent, um but if you've made improvements to your property, you're gonna see that on top of whatever improvements that you've made. So you could see like a forty-five percent.
Not to, but I mean, your most homeowners are. Are aren't in that range, but they're they're still, you're looking at. You know, a huge increase. Cut down to. Three percent.
And then if this doesn't work out in the future and they go back to reevaluate it, and then, you know, here like five years down the road, but here we've been capping it at three percent. And then they're like, nope, we're going back to, you know, what's what's your market value, and it's like, well, we've been undervaluing for all these years now and.
You couldn't catch up, is what you're saying, it could be, yeah.
Well. You can look at that another way, though. That only. Helps the spike on valuation.
Yeah.
But if the value isn't there and we have to raise mills, it's gonna spread the mills to other areas that aren't capped.
Correct.
If if there is such a thing, so it it's not necessarily. Not necessarily gonna hold. A county or entity to a specific that they can't go up over three percent. You could still go over the three percent, but it's gonna be spread in a different form. It'd be a different formula of where it's coming from because of the caps in certain areas. So.
Well, this is all property, right, this is we we, you asked that question, so this is all. Any of every property, so I don't know where it could spread to.
We just, well, but you raised it on your own, but if if the raise. Was capped at three percent because residential went up fifteen. But then ag land maybe only went up two percent that year. Well, it wouldn't ever, it the cap actually wouldn't affect it because it didn't meet the threshold of the three percent, right? So. That's where it's, but then you're gonna have to make up. The difference in lost revenue for the county by taking your mill.
Well, that would require more more adjustments uh than we've done in the past, right? It'll require smaller, more consistent adjustments. Versus. You know, this huge.
But. I think the the big lesson though is, I I don't know, see how it's feasible to go from an election in the first of November. And this is statewide, every county, every city, everything would be uh, this will affect school districts, everything, get their, have a budget that. Could work under this scenario, but the new scenario gets voted in and be ready to go January first. Uh two months.
Yeah.
I can't imagine. Going to do that fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And anything you hear, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I'll keep it updated on anything.
Because there, one thing about legislature, they can all of a sudden have a new proposal and. And. It really can go fast.
Correct.
Yep. I wrote online, so I wanna make it.
I can, I can forward one to you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, next we have Mark Seltner, Finance Director with our Budget Recap. Pat, did you send an email to us inviting us to a township meeting?
Okay. I think you're getting spooked, maybe, it just got caught in our quarantine.
I I sent one to uh. Um to Scott, telling him we needed to ask him to bring uh sound system.
Okay, interesting. I don't know why I'm.
I haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, so. This is like the really fun part of my job. Um I made.
I made something new. I guess I'm calling it a twenty twenty five budget book.
Thank you.
Um, so it's all of our levied funds. The general, Noxious Weed, Extension Council, those are the three levied funds that we have. Um, this doesn't incorporate any of the other sales tax funds like um. Solid Waste or Joint Communications, I'm kinda just starting with this, seeing how you guys like it. But it's got some charts, um. Graphs in there, talks about our expenditures, our levies, our mill rates.
This is incredible.
Some more verbiage. The budget calendars, if we uh, stay with R and R, if we exceed R and R, the different dates. Um, different uh, descriptions about revenues that maybe the public can get aware of. Uh, different graphs and such, and this is a a printout, of course, but I was gonna send you the digital version. Um, the digital version is is a lot nicer, because as you get back into like these back or pa- back pages. Um, it's color coded. So, um, like if people wanted to say. Uh, for every um. Department, so like this one that I turned to was Register of Deeds, but like health insurance. Uh, well, we did away with that one, but um, employee benefits, CAPers, FICA, it's all grouped under like employee benefits. It's color coded, so on on the digital version. So everyone can kind of follow along where the money's, how it's in the different buckets, and this is not something new that. I didn't reinvent the wheel with this, most of this information that I have to already do for the state. The state wants it in this type of format, so I just kind of merged everything. Um, into a document that maybe the board and the citizens, it helps them follow the budget too. Uh, towards the end, it's it, the general fund is over and then it starts Extension Council, Noxious Weed. And then the very last few pages is the the budget summary and the certificate page that the commission signs. So, um, this is also available publicly and at the state level, but it's just kind of uh. Something that sums up all these other pages into a a couple of page documents, so.
Wow, this is awesome.
Thanks, um, so it can change, we can alter it from year to year, add stuff to it. Um, and it can just be a living document that evolves and gets better. Um, so I was gonna say, if you guys wanna have time to look it over. Um, and approve it, you can, or if you don't think it needs approval, I can just stick it on the county website. I can maybe have Jody share it on the Facebook uh, page of the county. It's not information that's new, it's already out there at the state level. All of these numbers are pretty much but uh, published in the budget that is already on the. Website and Facebook, um, this is just a different format, that's, I think, a little easier for citizens to follow. Or I hope it is.
Yes, this is incredible.
This will be used here for me to, it's a one stop shop.
Seriously.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I think page, page seven and page eight. Uh, kinda talked about the appropriations, so if there's anyone that questions how much the county gives to those. It's in there in the hard format.
You've got graphs.
Yeah.
That's, uh, we've been talking about doing something with graphs, cause that's where very visual that somebody can actually see. And they do the comparisons.
And the, and the digital version's nicer too, because it's got the color. Um, I don't have a color printer, I just have black and white, so that's why you guys have that, but um. Yeah. One thing with the appropriations is. So I guess in our conversation, we. Talk that the Extension Council is an appropriation, but it's also its own levy too, so it's in the appropriations, but. Towards the end, they have their own sheet as well, so. In in the back part, the Extension Council is separate, not part of the general fund, so when you're looking at the appropriations on page eight. It's, it's in here, but it's not in the general fund, that's just a a little caveat. So this was fun putting together, all of the hard work came together and. Maybe everyone will appreciate it.
Very much.
Well, we'll see how it goes this year, if no one's looking at it or uses it, it it is a little time consuming, so it, we can discontinue it, but.
I think you made a perennial workload for yourself. But a- actually, though, if it if it it will help, I think down the road. The input now is gonna save time down the road, I think as a commissioner, I can save it all really.
Yeah.
Well, and you just, I mean, let's be honest, from our level of transparency. You just knocked it out of the park with this document for us, right, of like, people wanna know this information, and here it is.
Yeah.
The living document of exactly what we look at, the decisions we have to make, you know, all the things, so.
Well, and like I said, this one is just the levied funds, so you know, if if we wanted to add. The sales tax funds at the end, we can, we could just move right into that and then do the same thing for um. A breakdown of solid waste and dispatch budgets too.
That's awesome. Well, yeah, I mean.
So, that's twenty twenty five.
I think that it is probably good practice that we just adopt it, and. We have a motion to adopt as presented and put it on our website, social media, are you guys good if I, I mean.
Yeah, like I said, it's not any new information that I've just put in there, it's all stuff that we've approved already and.
We usually get a a a about a page a week or a report a week.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, during budget season, and now it's already.
Yeah.
Here.
All in there.
Yeah.
Alright, so I would look for a motion to approve the Atchison County Kansas twenty twenty five budget levied funds packet. As presented and prepared by our Finance Director, um, this will, document will be put on our social media as well as our website. Um, for for the public's consumption, do you have a motion?
Yes, and with uh, slight, uh, we might wanna say that it will be a living document, cause we will probably be. Uh, changing as we go, and so this is a.
Twenty twenty five, and then we'll create twenty twenty six, so these are pretty much.
Yeah, that's all set.
Set.
But, but the, we could add the sales tax and things like that, that's what I was wanting to, that there may be more to come.
Yep, perfect. Alright, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Yeah, and if you would, oh, you did, never mind, the digital version is in our inbox, awesome.
Yeah, it's it's really nice, it's.
Great.
It's nicer to um, plus with the digital, you can uh, find in the document, so if you wanna go to. Oh, where's the stuff about commissioners, where's the commissioner budget, you can just search commissioner, and it just takes you right, right there, so. And the page numbers was helpful, um, there's, like, page one is all of the department heads. The board, the elected officials, the appointed officials, um, everyone kinda knows who's who and. Anyway, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's great.
Thank you.
Okay, so, now that the fun is out of the way. I've got a couple things I put together. About the twenty twenty six preliminary stuff.
Thank you.
So, this is probably gonna be a a lot of information, but I think if if we go through it. And dissect it out piece by piece, it'll won't seem so daunting, so I used the same budgetary figures. That we have in twenty five for twenty six, just to kinda get an idea of of where we're going before we meet with departments, so you guys have an idea. Of what you want. So, based on the discussion that Holly just had before you, I may have. My valuation may be skewed, so I did a five percent increased evaluation, she was talking more in line with ten or more. Um, so, keep in mind through all of this, this, that could change, I guess, based on what she said. So our R and R was forty nine point two six one. Um, for the twenty five budget, with the increased valuation, I'm estimating the R and R will be down to about forty six. That is kind of based on calculations that the state has, it could vary little by little, but I think it should be around forty six. If it's five percent valuation. So you lose like three mills there just in R and Rs, or the evaluations going up. So like I said, we keep the budget numbers the same for twenty six that we had in twenty five. Um, I think that we should use the same revenue for EMS. I know before we talked about lowering it from six fifty to something else, but. I did a three year average from twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. The three year average is six hundred and forty nine thousand, that keep, that's bringing in. Um, he's already brought in a hundred thousand this year so far, and we're only through one month. Um, now, keep in mind, some of that could be backlog that that didn't get. Received it in in twenty four, so some of that could, even if half of it was, was that in. Receiving it in twenty five, there's still, that's a big portion that he's collected. So just for argument's sake, if we kept it the same, that's six hundred and fifty. Backing down the interest that we earned in our bank account. From three hundred and twenty five thousand to two hundred thousand, because there's not as much money there. Um, the only big chunk of money that we have and can rely on is tax money to gain interest. Which, as we see through when we do payroll and AP, that dwindles, you know, throughout the month. And then. The sale of senior village proceeds is the only other big chunk of money sitting in the checking account. That get interest, uh, we don't have ARP anymore, the hospital grant that we had. Um, is now being paid out to the hospital fully, so there's no. Other big funds sitting in the checking account accruing interest, it's just the tax money and the senior village proceeds. Though I don't think we're gonna get interest as much um, in twenty six as we did in twenty four or twenty five. The interest rate in the bank account has already changed since I typed this document. It was four percent, now it's three point seven in a week. So, I kept the appropriations all the same that we paid in twenty six, or that we paid in twenty five. Kept them the same for twenty six, and I did not factor in a COLA. So there's several things that could change based on all that, but it's keeping numbers the same. The tax rate mill levy would increase from fifty one point five two two, which is what we adopted for the twenty five budget. To fifty four point six two three, so that's three mills higher. However. When the previous county clerk did the final values, the mill levy actually projected to fifty four point eight six one. Three point three three nine mills higher than what we said we were going to collect. So.
How how does that happen?
So it happens when assessed valuations of properties increase after the budget is done. So between um. August and November, when the final valuations are set, there's property values that change in between there. So, the values go higher, means it says we're gonna collect more than what we actually thought. So, that means our our mill levy is already at fifty four point eight six one. So, and I was projecting our mill levy would be fifty four point six two three, which is already higher. Than what I was projecting at. Then we add in NRP. And then it goes to fifty six point four five two, which is ten mills higher than R and R. So if the board was willing to stay at R and R of forty six, you would need to reduce the budget by almost two and a half million. So then I just kinda broke it down of um, what one mill equaled in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five and twenty six, so you can see how much it is. Increasing per mill in each of those years. So if we take the, what I think the budget's gonna be at, if you keep the numbers the same, add in the NRP. The Neighborhood Revitalization Program, we get fifty six point four five two. If we use the previous county clerk's final valuation at fifty four point eight six one, it's a difference of one point five none, five nine one mills. Which is three hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. That you would need to reduce in order to stay the same as twenty twenty five.
Something don't seem right there. Sorry, it seems like. How can that be when it says to stay at at R and R, we need to, oh.
And that's just to stay at R and R, that's just to stay at R and R.
Okay, and so this is.
And last year you did not stay at R and R.
Right.
Or the year before, so you don't, you don't have to do that. Uh, just, these are two different examples.
Alright, alright, this is just staying the same, okay, wow, that's.
It would be a much different story if we stayed at fifty one point five two two, that's what the board approved, fifty one point five two two. But it actually came out to be fifty four point six two three. So we're already closer.
So, so do they use that, what we, the the figure that we actually. Were proved of the fifty four, or do you use the updated one that you and Michelle at the, or. I'm sorry, the first, our one that we had was fifty one five two two. Or do they use figure against the fifty four?
They use the fifty four, so we'll bring in money for the fifty four, we won't bring in money for the fifty one.
Okay, I'm surprised because that wasn't.
Yeah, that's, that's the clerk's process of doing the final valuation.
Okay.
Yeah, so the the board is just setting it um, to the taxes it's gonna take to fund the budget. But if valuations come in from the appraiser's office more, then the clerk has to go with that, not the number the board gets set at. Now, if it's less, if it goes the opposite way, it uses what the board set it at. Like if it came in at like forty seven, they would use fifty one.
Okay, and maybe something else here that you can. So last year we went above R and R. So once you do that and you go through that process and you you do that, is that your new benchmark for figuring your next R and R? Or are you already behind?
You're already behind.
So, that's where that, this, when it says ten mills uh, higher, that's from previous R and R. Exceeding it before, okay, that that clarifies, clarifies something for you right there, thank you.
Sure thing, um, so then I just. In the bold font down below, I just said, you know, the R and R is a a guess, there's several things that can happen between now and then. Um, this is not, this is projecting, not rolling anything over to reserve. Um, a couple weeks ago, we had a discussion about, I didn't think that it would be in the county's best interest to roll anything over. Because you're already starting at a lower number, then. Y- your cash will be lower. Um, and I don't think we're in a, a spot to do that, since we cashed in a CD. Um, and this is also not planning to roll anything into reserve. I I visited with some of the cities and counties um, that I'm a part of with the listserv. Um, the Finance Association listserv, and they are starting to budget for a rollover. Say it's twenty five thousand or fifty thousand, they just budget for it, and then when the first of the year gets here, they just. Roll it over right now, and then they don't worry about trying to roll it over at the end of the year, it's already planned to roll it. So they roll it then, and then whatever happens, happens, if they need to roll it back, they can, but it's just something that. Is seen happening, a trend.
Is this taking into? Count. The cash that we had plugged into.
Yes. So, it's, I guess what I, what I mean of taking into account is, that is stripped out of here, it's already done for twenty five. I'm not saying we're gonna use any cash for twenty six, it's like taken out of the equation.
Okay, so this generates enough. Uh, uh, property tax to uh, make up for the cap that we used.
It's the difference between the fifty one and the fifty four.
Okay.
That's, because that's three mills at two hundred and thirty, two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. So that's six hundred thousand right there that just got made up from the valuations. Um, from what the board set to what Michelle's figures were, so.
Right, I just wanna, I'm doing all the. Right, I just wanna, I'm doing all the scenarios in my head here, so I just wanna.
Yeah.
Make.
So the next sheet is just a. Kind of year to year comparison purposes. Uh, per department and then the appropriations about in the middle. So you have twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five. So that's something you guys can review and see how it changes from department to department or appropriation to appropriation. So I don't know if that would help you at all, but I just included it. So I guess I had a note. When Corey was here earlier, he talked about personnel costs potentially having an increase. So in any of this data that I give you, that that doesn't, that's not in there. So that that could alter it. Cola, if you wanted to factor any of that could alter it. Appropriation amounts would alter it. So I guess. This, I think the best information I could do. With giving you how, if you use the same numbers as twenty five into twenty six, how it would shake out. So about three hundred and seventy one thousand. And more ad blorum taxes. Is what would be needed to fund the same amount.
I think that's a missing piece for the public, because. If you think about it from a common sense standpoint, values go up, the county is collecting more money, mills should go down. They don't understand that we've been utilizing cash and playing these different. Backdoor avenues where that's that's the hard part, right? You can't digest. It's it's not like that. We're not levying what we need to run the county. Um, and I think we need to get there. To where when values do go up, they should expect we're collecting more money, right? So that should should provide the. The generality of how it works, but and same with looking twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, you know, for the last four years. If you see a department spike. Like a roller coaster and up and down, well, we use ARPA for the treasurer to offset fifty thousand of her dollars.
Right.
So if you didn't actually go down fifty, it's just. And I think that was a learning lesson for me after the fact last year at our budget hearing. When um, the gentleman that's a financial advisor and the community is reading the percentages. And it's like, oh, gosh, I was almost caught off guard, right? Like, why would that percentage? And then after driving home, I'm like, well, goodness, I didn't, you know, the percentage is not right because.
Factored.
The cake commission is, you know, used cash on the back end in certain areas to. So it's hard, right? Because you want them to have a clear understanding of where and why, but.
Sure. Well, and there's.
And same with road and bridge. With the road bond and the bridge bond.
Right.
That were just floating in the general budget without a a home. And when you came on, you're like, well, this needs to be in the road and bridge budget, so it's clear to the public what they're paying for.
It's currency.
So from twenty one to twenty five, it looks like we increased substantially, but. It was just we put it where it needs to be, so you know what you're being, what you're spending on road and bridge, like. The bridge bond and the road bond are now included in that. So.
To mark on the reserves, um, where are we?
At right now?
Yeah, I mean, if so, I think the last time that you presented those figures to us. I didn't. Compare the the negatives and the and the positives, you know, the pluses and minuses in those figures, but I knew we had some minuses. We had some. Parties that went in the red. Are we, are we, if you, are we in the green on the total number?
Yeah.
Or are we, okay, so but probably not by a whole lot, though, I don't know, or are we?
So you're talking like how much money was left in the general fund. Overall.
I suppose it's general, it's it's the reserves through twenty four is what I'm.
Yeah, so there's about two hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay. And 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 is that? It's not fixed, it's factored in this, right?
Okay. So if if you do want to factor that in, then that's two hundred and ninety thousand that you've gotta come up with now. Because you're you're taking your general fund down to zero. Well, you know. If you have two hundred and ninety one that was included in these numbers and you take that away, now you. That three seventy one is increased by two ninety. Cause I'm saying that we're gonna start the year. With two hundred and ninety one, or start twenty twenty five, and if this is based off of twenty five's numbers. And now you take two ninety one away, well, now we gotta rework it again. Cause I started this with what was gotten in twenty five.
Okay. And we have not yet technically released that. That we're spending for for departmental.
Well.
Spending, or have we?
You've allowed them to have it in their budget. They just didn't use all of their budget.
But as far as using that reserve going forward. We have talked about.
Yeah, no, I mean, I gave my recommendation that you shouldn't, but you didn't really vote on anything like that or.
To that point, your recommendation, um. I think that hit home for me, uh, uh, as far as like looking at things from a different perspective. And I think less is more when it comes to the county of when we like. I feel like last year it kept getting talked about, which it still gets funneled back from different people in the public of. You know, oh, you have so much money or all these things, like we have investments or we have reserve. And the goal was eight to ten percent reserve. We need to get to where we have one reserve. And that we're looking at capital expenditures or CIP plans as the county as a whole. Not departmentalized, right? So that we, when we have these, these years of not collecting everything. Or, you know, we have a handle on what's going on overall. Um, versus line itemed out, you know, oh, we have eight reserve accounts. Well, now we should have one reserve. And know that the goal is ten percent, you know, whatever it is. And. And when there's challenges in the organization, then we communicate those with our department heads. To find a way, right? Like for Brian's instance, like, hey, I didn't budget for any of this, but. This just went wrong. Oh, no problem. We have, you know, we have a plan, let's talk through it. And instead of eight different reserve pots. You know, I just, I think it's cleaner and it's. How much money does the county have? Well, this is the amount of money because it's right there in the reserve. Gaining us interest. We know, you know, and and to put some parameters in line that commissioners shouldn't use that for. Offsetting the mill levy for a year. You know, it's, we need some principles from a money management level that unless it's generating more revenue. Then like, let's talk about that offsetting to lower taxes, but just to throw eight hundred thousand dollars. To lower the mill for one year, what's next year, you know, and we gotta start thinking what's next year and and forward thinking, so. I just, I don't know. Well, I liked your recommendations, what I'm trying to get at, and and we've never, like Eric and I had talked, that there's never been. A certain way of doing things, like each year it's a different way. And it's like, we gotta create some principles to where it's good for the organization beyond the people sitting in the seats that. These are the best principles for how to how to go through it, and now having you on board, I think, then you can carry those on, I mean, right? Like. This is.
To be also fair, legislation's changed, uh, staff has changed and everything too, so we've always. Arranged what we had to fit the best fit that year, but it's it's hard to make. A policy that would fit now and then in ten years be doing it the same way, because legislation and stuff's gonna change, just like how. Uh, I mean, you you're you're principled about having so much uh, reserves and that can stay the same.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what I was talking.
Getting there is what will change.
Like when you talk to other county commissions, they have the policy like. You know, Shawnee is even like twenty five percent, but some are like ten percent reserves. You you should have on hand, you know, so that. When lightning happens and strikes the courthouse and we need all of a sudden come up with a hundred grand. We have something for those moments, but that we don't have them in twelve budgets of the emergency moments, it's, here's the reason.
So I guess just to, at the end of the day. If you want to use the reserve from twenty twenty four leftover, what it will do. Is start twenty twenty five with zero. And you will have to recoup that at some point somehow. And and go taxes.
Well, I I get what you're saying, um, but then the question is. Which department over budgeted? So that, so that's another question.
Yeah, so the.
So because that's, that's what how we get the reserve, right?
Right.
From twenty four.
Right.
Somebody over budgeted and um, and so. It's just another thing to look at.
It could be, um. I mean, there could have been a project that didn't get done because ARPA was funding it, or. Maybe a a vehicle was supposed to be purchased and and didn't occur because of whatever reason. But yeah, um, we can run you a report, and I think maybe I did send one, um, that had the ending balances.
Okay. Cause that's. That's just another part of budgeting, is is uh, trying to figure out where we where we went over, where we went under and uh. How you bring those numbers closer together, you know?
Right.
It's not a bad thing that we ended up with. Two hundred and whatever thousand it was, you told me, um, that's a good thing that we're that much more ahead, but.
Well, in two hundred of two hundred and ten, I think that was a CD, so it was much less than, so maybe we had sixty.
Got you. No, well, that's. That's pretty good, actually. Theoretically, if you. Started off and with the reserve in the budget, like you'd have it here. And you wanted to fully fund it and have what it, that ten percent at the end. It would just show up different because you wouldn't have individual reserves, you would you'd have a reserve at the end of the year. Like county general reserve. Or versus having each department have a small reserve. And and then the budget would. Show different, cause you, one, you're gonna have to budget to recoup the whole ten percent reserve.
Right.
Versus. Budget in each department. And so it would be how it would look. At the end of the day, it'd be taxing the same dollars. It would be how it's gonna show and if it's gonna be simplified and also at the discretion of the departments.
Yeah, because if the department spends everything that they've gotten. You won't have a reserve because there's nothing to move over.
Yeah.
So.
Another one's they stay within their budget.
Right. Right. And so that's why this this bottom last sentence is here. Like what if each department spent exactly what they were given for their budget? You would not have a reserve. That's why some cities and counties are going to budget one.
Right.
Because they're budgeting through their budgeting process, they've finally fine tuned it enough to where the department is spending what they're allotted. And so there's nothing left to roll over, so that's why the boards now start have to budget for it.
Which is good, though, because then you know what you're budgeting.
Right.
And what your goal is, if it's ten percent, you know, and once it gets there, then you're not budgeting for it, like, it's.
Or you're budgeting what was taken out from previous years.
Yeah, and you have an explanation for every dollar.
Yeah.
As it should be.
So I don't know what you want to do with this information, so I know it's a lot, so definitely think about it, but.
I don't think it's great base information, because when we get started, what, how to look at things, I know we had talked one time about even. Maybe having a a session when we just talk about expectations about what we're thinking about. Now, especially with this information, we can kind of think about what we see coming. As a as a commission and uh, we can plug that in at some point.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess key takeaway is if we keep the numbers the same. And everything else at the top stays the same that I thought it would, it'd be about three hundred and seventy two thousand more and add more tax.
But it's gonna be. Still a a pretty good jump because that's making up for the cash and stuff that we put in. Even though it don't look bad as far as a jump in mill, the the actual tax dollars would be pretty sizable.
Yeah.
So we have to keep that in mind, too.
All that I have, unless there's anything else.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, of course. Makes me know.
Exactly, yeah, thank you.
Maybe next is notices and communications. Uh, I have a question on that. I've been getting, um. Emails since last week, um, and I haven't accessed them because I didn't want to do it without being in the meeting, but. Exchange Bank is sending me documents and I just wanted to make sure I'm authorized. All of us that I can, I should be the one signing these things.
Believe you're a signer on the payroll and the payable bank account.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna do it for the first time because I.
Maybe more.
Um, it's just asking for. Okay.
Yeah, Connie's on all of them, Susan's on them.
And I think that just happened here. Last week.
Okay, uh, just asking for my signature right now, so let me.
Yeah, it's typically the the chair, because there's three signatures on the checks, so it's the chair, the clerk, and the treasurer.
Consent for electronic transactions. I am gonna sign it then.
I mean, that's it.
Financial institution deposit account. Susan.
It's out.
Yeah. Yeah, good. So I'm going to sign this. Or look for a motion to allow Casey or to sign on behalf of the county for exchange bank government signature. Um, documents. I don't know if I need a motion on that or. Or an open meeting, every, nobody opposes that I finish these documents. Can I just do that? Okay, so I'm done, so you guys should have everything you need. I just never like to sign outside of a meeting with. Everyone on board of what's going on. Okay, so introduction and considerations of resolutions. And none this week, um, executive session with justification statement. I don't have any executive sessions. Um, so I would look for a motion to adjourn into workshop uh, with the city manager.
I'll move. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.